Okay, it's seven o'clock on Tuesday, July 8th. The call to order the planning commission meeting. Again, I don't know if we're being taped or not.
Yes.
From above, but I'd like to thank SCTV for taping. And just to say that I was away during the last meeting, and when I got home, I went online. And as someone who has trouble hearing sometimes in this room, the SCTV thing was absolutely perfect. Unbelievable, you know, the shots of you people deliberating and fighting and everything else. But the audio, I could hear it better there at my computer than I often can here, so I thank SCTV for doing that. There's no need to seat alternates tonight, except for Gary, we've got a full house. And the first item on the agenda is the referral. Hiram, do you want to lead into it?
Just like to say that the referrals, a referral from the zoning commission with regard to rezoning, know some properties on West Street. And Vaughn Morecki's here to talk a little bit about that. I think you have copies of the maps and his explanation. He's can go ahead and explain it. There you go.
I do like in our meetings, Cass, if I have to come up here, maybe on this side of it.
I'm Vaughn Morecki, live at 26 Lucy Way here in Simsbury. Been a resident here for 50 years. Back in 2007, I purchased 3 Griss Mill Road, which is really on West Street. You might be familiar with the Allstate sign in the front. And Allstate's no longer a renter, so I'm going to lose that marquee in a little bit. But in '07, I purchased 3 Griss Mill Road. And then about, I guess, three years ago, I took over 1 Griss Mill Road. Those parcels really go together with a common parking lot. More recently, I lost one of my larger tenants, that's Allstate. It's about 1,300 square feet in building number three. And I'm working with Rich Correa, who I'm sure many of you know, to help lease out that space, either part of it or all of it. During our discussions, we talked about potentially looking at the zoning change for the two buildings. My two buildings are personal office. So if you take a walk down the street, starting on my corner, number one and number three Griss Mill, were personal office. The Jurzacks, who are the next building over, are R-15. And then you have two more buildings, which Marlene Jung, I believe the CPA owns. Those are B-2. The hairdresser's B-2. And then Salter's is industrial. So we have really four different zones in the course of 100 yards, 150 yards there. I'm requesting the zoning change for a couple of reasons. Number one, it'll help me market the buildings a little bit better as I try to rent them out, especially in number three, where I don't have a lot of cut-up offices like in number one. I've got some big office space. And I've had people come to me who are interested in anything from a pizza shop to a hairdresser to a sports shop to, you know, all kinds of things. This would open up my opportunities to be able to rent that out better. And then when I decide to sell the buildings, I think make them a little bit more marketable. And number three, I think it goes well with the PAD next door. I think ultimately, that whole neighborhood would really try to tie in together nicely. You've got the PAD, you've got residential there, you've got the restaurants, some retail space. Having that all B-2 in there would probably be good for the future of that neighborhood, I think. For the Jurzacks, they'd ask me to represent them. They're my neighbors. I have the first right of refusal to purchase their property. I grew up in that neighborhood. I grew up with them and their family. They're just as interested as I am to have that consistent B-2 zoning all the way through when they leave, pass on, sell the building. They want their property to be more marketable as well. I'm happy to answer any questions that you folks have.
So what you're suggesting is, is that the R-15 residential that's right next to you has no objections to this change?
None at all.
And Mark, I don't know if you saw it, but there was a letter, you know, an application for the zone change. The Jurzacks included a letter indicating that Vaughn can represent them in this.
As he spoke.
Just to tell you how adamant they are about it, when I came to the town hall with the application, I thought it was going to be one fee for both applications. You know, it's not cheap. And it was really two fees. I went back to them and said, hey, listen, because I told them I would handle all the paperwork and I'd pay for the fee, when I thought it was a whole lot less. So I went back to them and said, it's pretty steep. I don't necessarily need you. I think it would be nice if we all did it together. I said, we feel strongly about it. We'll pay the fee. We think it should be B-2 all the way through. So that's how strongly they feel about this being consistent.
But we're not changing their A, we're not changing their R-15.
I am requesting that as well.
I see.
Yes.
So you're changing their R-15.
Both my POs to B-2 and their R-15.
I see.
Can you tell me about the Jurzacks? I mean, I see somebody signed a document that you can do what you want, but I don't know who signed that, so what do they like?
Well, I grew up with their family. I grew up on the beginning of Firetown Road.
Are they seniors?
Joe Jurzack was a police officer here my whole life growing up. They're probably in their mid, they're my parents' age. They're in their mid-70s. I grew up with all their boys, their daughters in town.
Cognizant and all that?
Absolutely. Absolutely. If you drive by them, they're always working out in their yards, always tinkering around doing something out there. And Mrs. Jurzack's kind of like my watchdog in my two buildings there. She tells me when a light's on, a light's off, or someone's leaving their car parked in there from the restaurant next door, so.
Do they know about this meeting?
They absolutely do. She's been over my building probably since I sent the application five times to wonder what the status is on it, so.
Are they living in that residence?
They do. Yeah, they currently reside there.
So if it was changed to B-2, would they have to move?
No.
No.
The squiggly lines.
B-2 includes residential.
The squiggly lines on this, they show two buildings or three? In other words, are we talking about the house to the left as I face it?
These are where?
How many houses are there? Or how many buildings?
So two for B, then Jurzacks is three, then you have two residential, well, they're residences, but they're B-2. Then you have the hairdresser, and then you have, excuse me, Salter's.
Griss Mill, one, one Griss Mill.
One, three.
Three.
Jurzack?
Two.
All right. But I was figuring, that's why I didn't figure this wasn't.
Jurzack has that detached garage in the back?
They do, yes.
So even though it doesn't have a squiggly line, still, these are the three you're talking about?
Yeah.
Okay. Just make sure.
And did you say next to the Jurzacks, that's a residence on B-2?
Yeah, there are two of them. The two buildings there are rental properties that CPA in town owns, or in the area owns.
So Marlene, is she aware of what you want to do?
No.
Is that something that we should notify?
They will be notified as part of the zoning.
I'm sorry?
They will be notified as part of the public hearing for zoning.
Okay.
If the commission requests or requires, I'm happy to reach out to her. I mean, I know her and our properties pretty much are by each other, so we've had, you know.
And the Jurzacks would get a letter for zoning as well?
Their applicant's here.
Okay, okay.
They're actually applicants.
They're actually, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, I get it.
Any other questions or comments, commissioners? None here?
Hiram, any history on how the zoning arrived at how it is now?
I think typically what happened, and Vaughn certainly probably knows better than I, but historically, just the way the buildings were used, I think is probably how they evolved, how the zoning evolved. But as you can see, and based on Vaughn's description, it's kind of a mishmash right now, right there, all the way from Salter's, which is sort of an industrial use, no question about that, and other uses that are currently there between the rentals and the other businesses that are going on. It's staff's recommendation, too, that the unification, kind of the clearing up of all these sort of different zones is probably a good thing to do at this time. So both the owners are not only willing to do it, but are applicants and are here. So I think clearing that up is probably a good thing to do. The fact is, I think it's just basically a historical kind of rather.
Yeah, a quick history for you. My two buildings were owned by Einstein Beckford many, many years ago.
Everything was.
Well, everything was, but they kept it longer. They sold some of those other properties off beforehand. They kept my two properties converted into personal office, and they utilized that, and then they rented that space out. I don't know if there was an owner in between, but they sold Dave Richmond, who I bought my building from, and then whoever bought the building next door from him. So EB wasn't too far removed from when I had purchased the buildings. I don't think they ever made it further than my two to convert the other buildings there.
I'm guilty of not looking in the planning development. When we dealt with the planning development, we dealt with West Street. Did we have any comments pertinent to these?
Yeah, there were some ideas about trying to create a district there that was sort of uniform. And so when I just talked about the recommendation, I think creating a uniformity where it makes sense is a good thing. And I think the planning development talked a little bit about trying to create a district there. There was some discussion, you may recall, about incorporating parts of West Street along with the town center. And the planning commission at that time said, we think it should be sort of its own area, and perhaps a district of some sort is a good idea, but we don't want to see it connected to the center. That was the final determination there. So that's why I think this request for this rezon is probably in keeping with that portion of the plan.
Other comments? You don't have a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that the planning commission submitted positive referral to zoning applications 14-28 and 14-29 for properties at 1 and 3 Griss Mill Road and 103 West Street to convert the current zoning zone to B-2 for both, both the applications. I think it'll bring consistency to the zoning and make it easier for business to thrive in that part of town.
Second motion.
And it also ties in or conforms with the 2007 Plan of Conservation Development. Got a motion seconded. Any comments? All in favor?
I have one thing before.
Okay.
This is not to cast any aspersions on you whatsoever. And I don't have a question for you.
Oh.
I think that in general, in today's day of elder, days of elder abuse that occurs all the time, to have an individual come to the committee and propose something in someone's stead, even with a signed document, might not be the best thing to accept. It would be prudent to know, to have one of the other people here just to raise their hand and say, yeah, I agree, I asked them to do this, or to have a lawyer representing them to step in in their stead. But when we accept a document signed by someone we haven't seen, that we can know is cognizant of what they're doing and who they are and what's happening to them, I think you sort of end up very close to the line of getting yourself in trouble. So I don't know if we even have a policy regarding that or not, but it's something that we should at least consider in the future beyond this alone.
Well, they filled out this, this application, which indicates, and they paid a fee, and they signed off on it here with their signature, so.
Right, they signed it, but did they sign it in front of someone who saw them doing it voluntarily? This is what I'm talking about. I agree, they signed a letter, and it shows that they're agreeing to it, but I think there's maybe an extra step of consideration that might be prudent. And like I said, I'm not saying anything negative about the app, this applicant, but it's something I thought we maybe should consider.
I felt similarly until I understood they were co-applicants. To me, 10 minutes ago, I felt differently, but not only I understand they're co-applicants, I feel a little better about it. But I think for other purposes, maybe we should.
For my specific situation, they don't want to come and sit through a public hearing. They don't want to speak, they don't like to speak in public. There's a hesitancy or a fear, if you will.
Well, if we had a letter from them notarized, that would, you know, authorize you as their spokesman or representative here, then we would feel better.
Yeah.
As compared to just a verbal commitment on your part.
And when you go to zoning, and do that, probably they should be there, or you should have the letter as well, because they might ask the same question.
Yeah.
And we'll discuss.
That's good.
The policy. Okay, a motion that's been.
Actually, one more comment to Hiram. On this application itself, it's put down as Vaughn is the agent, yet it's not signed by Vaughn as the agent.
I think that they signed a letter that's attached, and that's what says that. And certainly on the original application, you should sign that probably prior to.
It's just something I happened to notice as they were sitting here talking, but I agree with what Rich is saying, that, you know, a lot of these things should be just a little more formal. We know you, I've known you for years, Vaughn, and, you know, you're part of town, so I don't worry about it. But you're right, it could get, it could get abused.
Right, I think it goes beyond this particular instance.
I agree with that. Rich brings up a very good point, that things like this need to be a little bit more formal with some, you know, legal documents that say that this is in place, instead of a letter saying yes. I agree with that going forward, we should certainly.
Well, I mean, I'd say 95% at least of the things we look at, the owner's always there, even if they never talk, the lawyer's always, it's a mouthpiece, but it's still, the owner's always there.
Is it appropriate to make that recommendation to Vaughn, that, you know, when he goes before the zoning, that maybe he has some type of notarized document from them, so that you just run into that?
Yeah, I just basically said that. We'd suggest it.
I'll get it refilled out or re-signed and have it notarized at that point. That's not a problem.
Yeah, just maybe make your life a little easier.
Yeah, sure.
Especially down the road.
Yeah.
Do we want to amend the motion to include that?
I wouldn't suggest that. I think it's outside the scope of what you're being asked to do here, but I think clearly he heard it, clearly part of the record, so I think you're okay.
Okay. Any other comments? We have motions been seconded. Vaughn, favor? opposed? Okay. Nice map.
It's not available to everyone? It's part of the GIS system.
Yeah, yeah. I like West Street. You're not going to stick around? We'll keep it up, eleven. Sure?
You guys got all these.
That was fascinating. All right, communications, Hiram?
Just a couple of things. I wanted to give you a, a part of the public hearing last night, code. And this is a summary of the code that the zoning commission considered last night. I've only got two, I can get any more.
That's okay, I have a bunch of different copies.
This particular summary simply is a very brief synopsis of what's been referred to in a couple of different hearings as a 61-page regulation. And what it does is it kind of gives you an overview of what the form-based code for that particular property is all about. I think it's pretty clear, the way it's written. It does contain some illustrative images of things that are required, so as you look through the code, and if you want to read it in its entirety, that's certainly great. But when it talks about neighborhoods, and then it's got a series of images there as to what that refers to. Cluster neighborhood, mixed-use transition, special districts, they're all shown there in illustrative images, so that there's really no confusion as to the types of things that they're talking about in the code. One of the other things that we had included is a description of the different application types, the application types 1, 2, 3, and 4. That was discussed at length last night as well. And basically what that refers to, I think, as I may have talked to you before, is that the complexity of the application increases. Type 1 is simply a reuse of the existing building. It's pretty clear, it's not much, much going on there. Might be a new sign for a new owner, rather than leave the Hartford sign there that probably I would, at some point in time, assume that they will take that sign down. So that would be a type 1 application. Type 2 would be a little bit more complex. Type 3 is, again, a little bit more complex with buildings over 25,000 square feet. And a type 4 application is the most complex one, where it would actually require them to come in, go through a public hearing process for a change in what's called the master site development plan. And that's basically it. The other graphics that are attached are two things. There's illustrative master plans, there's a framework plan, then there's a second illustrative master plan, and a second framework plan as well. So the idea of the property and the way that the framework for how it's hopefully developed in the future is set out here in this sort of four-page document. So it's kind of a good overview. Just to let you know, the zoning commission did approve it last night. I think it was five to one, if I recall correctly, but it was approved last night and ready to move forward. So we're anxious to meet with CBRE, the Hartford's real estate entity, and help them start marketing, actively marketing the property in the very near future. So we have a meeting set up with them next week, so we'll do that.
There were a couple minor changes last night. Would you review those?
Yeah, one was, on one page, there's standards that are set up for each of those types of uses. And one of the standards was that on the northern parcel, the way the draft was worded was that one type of development could be proposed there. And what the commission recommended and what the original draft said was that we want two or more types of activities there. That is a blend of residential and possibly some neighborhood commercial there as well. And so that particular section of the regulations was revised to incorporate that. So that was the major one. The other one was that if the commission decided that there was some reason, for some reason, an application either didn't meet the standards, or they wanted to be sure it met the standards, that they had the ability to call a public hearing. The town attorney indicated that under Connecticut law, that that was within their prerogative, and so that'll be included as part of the regulation as well. Wouldn't necessarily do it unless it's something that, you know, somebody really wanted to see a public hearing about. If the plan, the whole purpose of the form-based coding is to say, this is the sort of the shape of what we see. This is where the roads would go, this is the types of buildings that we would see in these various areas. And so once the master site development plan is adopted, that's basically the format for the whole property, both north and south. So that's basically what the changes were. There were those two changes.
Hiram, I think it was two weeks ago last night, when the zoning commission met at the library? Is that when it was?
Yeah, probably four weeks.
And Gateway was there?
Two weeks, yes, yeah.
The way that the illustrative master plan was described was a little bit different than maybe what I understood you to have said the week before that. And the gentleman from Gateway said that, you know, there's nothing binding on these illustrative plans, they are examples. Whereas you had intimated or actually stated that, you know, you had to pretty much follow one or the other.
What happens is that, and maybe it's just a matter of terminology, Bill, so let me try again. If somebody comes in with an illustrative master plan, that is a master site development plan, that's called for in the regulation, that's in keeping with what they're showing here, that'll be fine. But if they propose to change the zones around, to move things around such that they don't comply with the illustrative master plans that have been adopted, that would be a change in that master site development plan process. That would be a type 4 application. So what we have here are two different examples of how that master site development plan could take shape. There are probably many more different types. But what we're saying here is, these are the ones that were talked about, these are the ones that went through the charrette process, these are the ones that we understand that people will be accepting of. If it's different than this, they're going to have to go through a different process, a more extensive process. I hope that's similar to what was said. I think that's what Scott and Jay were saying. It's not necessarily that this building would go in this location, kind of thing.
Right, but even these illustrative plans have different, you know, types of component zones on them.
That's right.
So what's to stop someone else from coming in with something that looks essentially the same, but with different component zones?
They could do that, but they're going to have to go through the public hearing process to get that.
That would be a, type 4?
Correct. So they would have to, once the master site development plan process starts, they would have to make that acceptable to the commission. Planning commission has a review of that. Design review board, obviously, will have a significant role in that as well. And then the zoning commission will make the final determination as to whether it's acceptable or not. Once that master site development plan is approved, then it's basically a site plan process from there on. That's the benefit to the developer.
Hopefully, we'll be looking at something soon.
Would hope, would hope, yeah. Yeah, I know that some people were skeptical about the fact that no one has actively participated in any marketing efforts, and I can tell you that from simply our position alone, and we're not the realtors, and they don't do their negotiations in public certainly, but I've talked to probably half a dozen different developers that have expressed significant interest in the property, and we expected, and I turned all those numbers and names over to the realtors, and we expect that those conversations have been ongoing. We think that the adoption of this regulation will move some of those discussions on further more quickly.
When you say interested in the property, the entirety of the property or sections?
I couldn't tell you. I can tell you that the groups that have called me were substantial. They're not your average, you know, small builder. They're from places like Boston and New York that are, have groups of people together with their own architects, their own, you know, development arms and so on. So some of them are substantial. You know, how those discussions proceed from now on with Hartford and CBRE, I couldn't tell you.
I must have missed a handle. I thought it was, which surprised me, it was unanimous, but maybe I missed a hand.
Yeah, no, one person.
I thought at least one person was going to vote against, but anyway, maybe I.
Yeah, one person voted against. There's anything okay on that one?
Mm-hmm.
As you know, too, there was lots of discussion about, after the last planning commission meeting, about the activity, and frankly, my misspeaking with regard to the planning commission's recommendation to the zoning commission with regard to another referral. And that referral had to do with the application at 155 of Hop Meadow. My understanding from the town attorney is that the commission wanted to make a correction in the minutes to reflect more accurately what was said. So I am happy to do that, happy to then create the report that will go to the zoning commission at their next meeting. I think is, is pretty accurately stated, and I'm not sure exactly what correction he would like to make, or anybody would like to make.
Well, I wasn't there, but was it stated that it's a one negative and one positive referral? Was it said?
Yeah, the fact is that one vote was split two to two.
Which is a negative referral.
That's right. And the other vote was unanimously negative.
Right.
So both are negative. Both are negative.
Pat, when we left your anna meeting, the tie vote was understood by most of the commissioners to be a positive.
Yeah, that was my fault, Mark, because here, let me explain how it works. One is that, that no recommendation to the zoning commission is taken as a positive.
Correct.
And I quickly, and I perhaps was doing something else or not paying attention correctly or whatever, but assuming that a tie vote was not a recommendation, I thought, well, that's not a recommendation. I talked to the town attorney the next morning, he said, no, that's a negative recommendation. So that's clear. No question about that.
And it was referred to zoning as such.
That's correct. And they knew that, and it was discussed last night that it was all negative.
But I guess my question is, is it clear in the minutes that it was?
Well, you tell me, if there's someplace in the minutes that you'd like changed.
I don't know, I'm asking.
I will recommend the change to that when we come to it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's fine.
So I think that that's important. If there's something in the minutes that need to be changed, that's fine. I didn't, I didn't see it, but I'm happy to, happy to change that, whatever. So there was no question about that, you know, other than two residents that were upset about it, I didn't hear anything more about it, other than the fact that a negative referral. That requires four votes of the zoning commission to take a positive action then.
But it would be four, ain't it?
That's right. So I'm not really sure, other than making me feel bad because I made a mistake, what the point is, but I'm happy to try to correct it.
It's 183.
183.
Can I ask about the reports that go up to zoning on referrals? Last night, they said the planning report was not there for the public hearing, so they had to extend the public hearing?
Yeah, the point was that the town attorney was under the impression that the minutes needed to be corrected to reflect what was said.
Before the report could be written?
One is, what has happened then is that I put together the report saying that the referral to the, from the zoning commission, or to the zoning commission from the planning commission, was negative in both votes. So it'll be a paragraph, and that's what they'll get prior to their next meeting.
But that couldn't be done for last night, because the town attorney wanted the minutes corrected.
The minutes need to be corrected so that the report can be written to reflect that. If I wrote a report that flew in the face of what the minutes say, then we have another problem. So that's what that was, and that's really the essence of it.
There was no movement on that last night.
No, the hearing was continued.
I see.
Yep.
It had to be, because our report wasn't there.
There was clearly no misleading, nobody was misled during many, many parts of the hearing. It was stated that the referral was negative, although the report that needs to go to them needs to be created, and I'll do that after.
It was stated clearly.
Yeah.
Several times.
Can you address the other issue, the PAD acreage requirement?
Yes, I can, actually. I have copies here of the section of the PAD that applies. Please understand, I want to be really clear about this, that it is never my intention to mislead the commission, and I've told any of the commissions that I work for, all seven that we represent and the four that I personally staff, if you have any questions about anything, please call me, rather than what I really hope doesn't happen, is misinformation gets passed on. So I would just like to point your attention to the last paragraph on the page that I just gave you. And take a look at where it says, "Any lot," it starts with any lot. Mm-hmm. "Any lot not conforming to the minimum required lot size at the time of the adoption of this article," and this is the PAD regulation, "shall be deemed to be legally non-conforming and shall be acceptable for an application for or inclusion in a PAD application." And that's it. Doesn't have to be ten acres. It says, "Any lot, regardless of size, at the time that this application, or the amendment to the regulations was put in place." Town attorney will opine on that prior to the next zoning meeting. And put that in writing for the zoning commission before the next meeting. So that's it.
So what it's saying is that none of these minimums really matter.
There's only one minimum. I won.
Correct, and that doesn't really matter.
That's what it says.
Unless there's a subdivision or a change in a zone subsequent to the adoption of the regulation.
Correct.
I think that lot is non-conforming to begin with, and that's what that paragraph states. It's already non-conforming.
That's right, exactly right. So again, I want to make really clear that it's never my intention to mislead anybody or misrepresent anything. I think that was, that point was discussed last night by a number of people. In order to clear it up, once and for all, I will be asking tomorrow morning, I talked to the town attorney today about it actually already, will be asking him for his written opinion for the next zoning meeting on the 21st. So I think it's pretty clear, I don't think there's any doubt at all what it says, and it is what it is. Now, ultimately, what the zoning commission does is another matter, and that's entirely up to them. And that's all I got.
Thank you, Hiram, for answering my question. I appreciate it.
To think of it in reverse, if the lot was less than ten acres and conforming, then it couldn't be a PAD. Did I say that correctly?
No, it could be anything. It can be. If it's less than ten acres, which is this, that particular lot is, regardless of whether it's conforming or not, it would still be eligible for PAD.
I don't understand why we have the, why do we have this at all, then? There's no point to it, if it doesn't matter.
Well, what we're trying to do is preserve what happened before the adoption of the regulation.
Exactly.
It's things that happened after that, which have to comply with the minimum contiguous tract.
Yeah, if somebody had a ten-acre lot and they cut it into two or three pieces in the meantime, and then they decided, you know, to apply for a PAD, that would go exactly to what we're saying. So the idea was to sort of freeze time right there and say, okay, if you've already got it and it's less than ten acres and it's eligible. If you don't, you don't get to create any from now on.
That makes sense.
So this was, what, two or three years ago when we drafted this now?
I think both our light bulbs went on at the same time. Thank you.
Okay, great. Again, please, any questions, anytime asked me, I give an answer, whatever it is I think is correct, and I'll do the best I can. Thanks.
Anything else? Thank you for your professionalism.
Appreciate it.
Okay, I guess, want to do minutes? Want to do minutes?
Yeah, sure, why not?
You do it.
Let's do the adoption of the minutes. Minutes of June 24th, regular meeting. Do I hear any changes for page one? Page two. Page three.
From line 183 on page four?
Correct.
Change that from positive referral to negative referral?
Correct.
Do we really want to do that? Because that's not what happened, which is what minutes are about, but do we want to add a note saying, kind of going to what Hiram had said, that in the meeting, we said positive, but in understanding the vote and what the vote really meant, it's actually a negative?
My understanding, from talking with the town attorney today about this, is that if, and he said only one word needs to be changed, and I'm assuming that is that.
Is a negative, and just leave it at that, even though that's what we said?
Yeah.
Okay.
Or that's what was said. Yep. But it actually is a negative referral, so all we're doing is correcting the semantics of what actually happened. It was just, it was just stated incorrectly.
Okay, yeah.
And so if we do change it to negative referral, it accurately reflects what was supposed to have happened and actually did happen. Yep. It's just a misinterpretation of vote. So we change 183 from positive to negative referral. Any changes on page five? Page six. Do I hear a motion to accept the minutes?
So blue.
Do I have a second? Rich, seconds. Vote on the minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Since we're the four of us.
Do you have some abstaining?
I wasn't here.
Sure. All four members who were here for that meeting, accept.
So who's abstaining?
Rich Cattos?
No, 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 I'm not abstaining.
You're not abstaining? Oh, I thought you said who approved.
Alan and Kevin.
Just Alan and you.
Alan, no, I'm abstaining, I wasn't here.
And Kevin.
Kevin, four of us are abstaining. The math doesn't work. One, two, three, four, so.
Well, you don't have to abstain, because you were replaced by.
I did watch the tape.
You were replaced by another commissioner, an alternate. So you don't have to abstain. You just can't vote.
If you're saying I'll abstain, even though I saw the tape in intensity.
The four members who were here, approve the minutes.
I like that.
Very good.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Are there any other items or motions to come before the commission? Do I hear any other motions?
I'm doing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all. Any abstentions?
Well, we're all here for that.